This is an open meeting posted right around the corner as you come in is the actual Open Meeting Act. If you would, please stand with us for a moment of silence and as well, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine justice for all.
Beth, if you'll continue with roll call.
Granquist.
Here.
Langy.
Here.
Merrill.
Here.
Clausen.
Here.
Murin.
Here.
Moaning.
Here.
House.
File.
Here.
All right. And under action, if I could, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, if you will please vote.
All council members voting in affirmative.
All right, and as well, the approval of the full agenda as presented in your pack.
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the full agenda, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
Okay. We do have a special presentation tonight. It's a proclamation for September 28th, 2015, as Family Day. Whereas the use of illegal and prescription drugs and the abuse of alcohol and nicotine constitute the greatest threats to the well-being of America's children, and whereas scientific evidence demonstrates that teen alcohol and drug use interferes with brain development and can inflict serious, sometimes irreversible, brain damage in long term, and whereas the prevention or delaying of teens using alcohol, tobacco, or other drugs for as long as possible is crucial to their health and their safety, and whereas a child who gets through their mid-20s without smoking, misusing alcohol, or using illicit drugs is virtually certain never to do so, and whereas the earlier and the more often an adolescent smokes, drinks, or does use illegal drugs, the likelier that adolescent is to become addicted, and whereas children of hands-on parents are far less likely to smoke, drink, or use other drugs. Now therefore, I sue Fuickman Mayor of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska by the power vested me, do hereby proclaim September 28th, 2015, as Family Day, be involved and stay involved in the City of Norfolk, and I encourage all citizens to recognize and to participate in the observance. Okay, and moving on, we're going to start with a couple of public hearings here. I'm going to open 19 and 20 together, 19 being a public hearing to review the City of Norfolk's fiscal year 2015-16 municipal budget, and as well, the public hearing to review the City of Norfolk's fiscal year 2015-16 proprietary budget, water, sewer, and solid waste. And that tells me I can open as well, 23, the public hearing to receive comments regarding changing the vehicle parking fund and the general tax request for the 2015-16 fiscal year for the amounts from the amounts for the 2014-15 fiscal year. And we'll open these hearings, and we're looking to City Administrator to take us through.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My privilege to present your annual budget here this evening. As you know, you've been through the preliminary budgets in fine detail in July. This is going to be an overview of the complete budget. Any fine detail questions you have will be answered between Randy and I, and the rest of the staff is here as well to support that. Our mission here in the City of Norfolk is to quite simply provide quality public services, and we do that through the support of our community that graciously gives us their hard-earned tax dollars to do what is necessary to grow our community and run our city and run all the services that go along with it. This budget is conservative, yet it's strong, and it's forward-thinking, and it strives to move us forward and accomplish the goals that are in front of you that the Mayor and Council have set through your goal-setting and strategic planning sessions. I just want to quickly read through those goals that you set. To continue to support area economic development, which is crucial, obviously, to our success as an area in northeast Nebraska, pursue recreational enhancement and quality life opportunities. This budget does that. Continue our street expansion and maintenance program. This budget is aggressive at that as well. Goal four, continue to positive community engagement and public relations. Goal five, increase emergency cash reserve, which this budget also accomplishes. Goal six, encourage community property maintenance in the long term and the short term. Goal seven, partner to stabilize the Elkhorn River Embankment, which is underway. Goal eight, lobby for and support completion of Highway 275 expansion to four lanes, which is, we've been involved in for a number of years, and it's really ramped up in the area with Four Lanes for Nebraska and other coalitions that we've been associated with. So this budget does that as well to help support that in lobbying efforts. And goal nine, to complete the library remodel and expansion, which is currently progressing as well as far as our design phase goes. So here's your general fund revenues. As you can see, the major part of our revenues come from sales tax, 47 percent, in fact, about $10.5 million come from our sales tax receipts. NPPD lease is second in that, at $4.6 million, and property tax is 1.9, which is a smaller portion than other revenues, which includes fees for service, occupation tax, intergovernmental revenues, and license and permits, and revenues like that to support the purple section, which you see, which is 23 percent, or $5.2 million. Please stop me anytime you have a question, Mayor and Council, I'm sure you will. Sales tax budgeted by fiscal years, you'll see the progression of our sales tax and how we have budgeted since 2007. You'll see the general increase in that with some flatter years over that course of time, and then you'll also see in 2016, you'll see a large increase there. The lion's share of that is that the voter approved the half-cent sales tax that was approved for the library expansion and remodel, and that is the budgeting number that you see in the budget, right at $10.5 million. Nebraska Public Power District, in our lease arrangement, is budgeted there. You'll see that again since 2006, 2007 budget year with some increases, but then in the last two years, you'll notice that it's been flat. NPPD has not raised to any great extent, raised electrical rates over the course of that time, and that's why our revenues are projected to be, continue to be flat going forward into the next budget year.
Shane, a question on that, on the, so what's it based off of? Mileage of power line, or mileage of structure, or just strictly usage?
It's based off of the adjusted gross revenues. We get 12 percent of the adjusted gross revenues, and basically adjusted, or revenues are all electrical sales within the city's city limits and the fringe area that we own the electrical distribution system in, less sales to tax-supported entities. The public schools, the NRD, those types of organizations do not pay the lease payment.
Does that, is that the two-mile radius, Dennis, or is it?
No, it's a, it's a area of electric system that we bought in 1970 when the community got the electric system from consumer public power, and so it's a, it doesn't match the two-mile zoning jurisdiction at all.
Okay. Thank you.
So that's, I'm assuming we have a dedicated time period, because I was, I just caught something in the news where South Sioux was changing from NPPD to a different supplier?
The wholesale contracts between the rural public power districts and NPPD retail, I believe, expire in 2021. The agreements between NPPD retail and the communities that they serve, those contracts run into the 2030-31 timeframe. So, South Sioux City is a wholesale customer, so their contract is about five years from expiration, and they're looking at a different electric supply arrangement.
And we're a retail, just to be clear for the audience as well, as a mayor and council know, we're a retail community.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mayor and Council? Here's municipal budget property tax comparisons for the general fund, debt service, economic development fund. You'll see in the general fund that those increases since 2007, with an increase from 1415 to 1516, you'll see that increase as to increase in valuation, Mayor and Council, that the community has seen, is incorporated in the general fund in whole. Debt service has not increased over that timeframe, and nor has our economic development fund, which is our LBA, $40 that are continuing to develop and that are currently committed. Here's a slide that shows property tax for the City of Norfolk. City of Norfolk's property tax asking and the total pie of property tax asking in comparison is 12.26 percent of the total property tax asking from political subdivisions in the Here's a slide that we typically throw in there every year to show you where Norfolk ranks in comparison to our sister first-class cities. We remain the fourth lowest in our comparison cities across the state. Again, that's from conservative fiscal management and goals that the Mayor and Council has set for us, allow us to keep property tax rates in check. Here's, this slide will show you the assessed valuation and the changes of assessed valuations over the course of that time period. You'll see the 4.81 percent is the valuation increase budgeted in 2000, or experienced in 2015, 1415, in the tax year that we're seeing from the county successor. The next slide shows our general fund revenues. Again, this is a recap of those previous slides, but taxes, sales, and property make up 61 percent of our total general fund. License and permits, 1 percent, or $230,000. Intergovernmental revenues, $5,000, $5.5 million at 2.26 percent. Charges for services, $2 million, 8.98 percent. Then you'll see your NPPD rent income there at 5.2, almost $5.3 million, or 23 percent. And then some other interest income for a small portion, and the non-revenue receipts. Here are the general fund expenditure highlights in front of you. Kind of faded slide there for the audience, sorry about that. Shows the divisions in the general fund. The general fund makes up the lion's share of what most folks think about when they think about the City of Norfolk, they think about the general fund, which includes administration, engineering, street maintenance, park maintenance, housing, recreation, library, fire, and police. We also do have our sewer, water, and solid waste funds that are coming up shortly to show, but these are the general fund highlights that you'll see. Personnel cost in each, and their total budget. Administration's total budget is $4 million, which includes a transfer in $1.3 million for capital projects in Keno and debt service and ED fund. That's a transfer to those funds. That's how it's accounted. Engineering, $779,000, $79,000 total. Street maintenance is your street crews that do your snow plowing and all your fixing of the streets, concrete work, all the things we think about when we have a snowstorm or some sort of event on the street they take care of, plus all the maintenance that goes along with that in the spring, summer, and fall, and that total is $2.9 million. Park maintenance budget, obviously, is for all of our park maintenance, which continue to grow and expand, fortunately. We have one and a half, almost $1.6 million total for their budgetary cost, including personnel and operations and capital. Housing is $524,000. Our recreation department is $836,000. Library is $4.1 million. And the fire and police, public safety, fire is $4.2 million, and police is 5.6, and it goes without saying what those public safety services provide for the community. Inside the general fund, you also, it's not highlighted in this slide, but I'll point out that we've able to increase our emergency cash reserve by $146,463, or about 6 percent. Our floor on that is 3.5 percent. We don't want to go in, we always want to increase it at least 3.5 percent is a target that the Mayor and Council set out some time ago, but that basically is, kind of keeps us, keeps us moving along right with the world, but doesn't really increase, get into our goal of getting 16 percent budgeted up in our cash reserve for a minimum. We're about 12 percent of the general fund revenue right now. Our goal is to get to a minimum of 16 percent. So we try to put away as much extra as we can into our emergency cash reserve fund, and that, those dollars would be used in, God forbid, some sort of critical event happens within our community and we have to get into our reserves, otherwise we don't touch those dollars. For instance, Pilgrim last year, if that would have struck a portion of our community, we'd have to have those kind of dollars available, or the flood in 2010, sometimes you get into those dollars for emergency purchases, equipment, and other supplies. So that's goal five. But our actuals on that, I'll well point out, our actual percentages, when we see our budgeting at the end of the year, our actuals are about 27 percent, which seems like a big number, but when you compare them to a lot of the other political subdivisions that are our companion political subdivisions, we aren't necessarily very high. You'll see a lot of other political subdivisions that have a number greater than 30, 40, 50 percent in their actual general fund cash reserves. So we got to keep striking that, at that goal. I think that's a very, very lofty goal that kind of goes without saying, it's not real sexy, it's not real flashy, but it's something that is prudent for us. So I appreciate the Mayor and Council setting that as one of their goals. Here's your expenditures by division again, shows the pie chart, and shows how those dollars are being expended. In fire, I want to point out that we included a property maintenance line item a number a couple of years ago, and we increased that to reach goal number six, and that to increase our ability to tear down dilapidated properties across the community, which the code enforcement staff and the city attorney deal with on the front lines, and they've been successful at that, and that is a continuation goal, and we have $120,000 budgeted in fire for approximately $120,000 budgeted for meeting that goal on a continuation basis. Here's your small capital outlay that you'll see, and you would see, and you see in the preliminary budgets, and I just recap in the highlights of each of the general fund budgets. Streets is going to purchase a skid steer for $45,000, a skid steer breaker, which is a concrete breaker device that attaches to that for $15,000. Excuse my typo there, I got 15, I missed a zero. $28,000 for a pickup, and a $15,000 snowplow, which does obvious things. Park maintenance, we have $12,500 budgeted from Tazuka, for Tazuka improvements. We continue to make improvements to our major parks. I highlight this one because we have a coalition of folks that are pointing to different improvements we need to make down at Tazuka. For example, we just spent this approximately $12,000 this last budget year to improve our ADA parking for the Ball Diamonds down there. Turned out wonderful, that project just got done, and those kind of things continue to happen, so we allot those dollars, or intend to allot those dollars in the budget moving forward for those types of improvements. $15,000 for landscape and hardscape improvements. Those are various improvements across our park community that Pat and his staff take a look at, along with the tree board, making those type of improvements from everything, from tree plantings to obviously some of the hardscape improvements that we had made to the parks as well. Library, we're going to purchase $21,000 worth of PC replacements for our staff and for the public. They get used, obviously, considerably there at the library. Fire improvements in small capital include $70,000, two for two response vehicles, $30,000 for bunker gear, that's a line item the chief plans to keep steady or increase every year to replace their bunker gear, which is the gear that they wear into the fire scenes. $28,000 inspector vehicle, $12,000 thermal imaging camera, which is a valuable piece of equipment for the firefighters that take into the fire scenes to find down victims and hot spots, works very well for him, for them. $9,500 worth of Paratek stabilizers, which is used at car wrecks and building collapses primarily. Police, small capital includes $115,000 worth of cruisers. Chief has recommended that they go to the Explorer package, which they've been gradually going to, starting last year, and it's been working out quite well for them. They're four-wheel drive, they're larger for the police officers and for anyone that they would have to assist or arrest. $17,000 in digital, in-car cameras as well, the police department, along with a whole line item of smaller items that are in the 84 account for the police department. Next slide shows the large capital projects, and a lot of your goals are met within, obviously, to meet a lot of these goals, you have to spend some dollars to do it. You'll see bullet number one, the $7.4 million library renovation and expansion, which meets goal, goals one, two, and nine. $707,000 for the Norfolk Riverfront Trail project, which is that grant that we recently sat for and received in partnership with a lot of folks, including NRD and Riverfront Committee, and the sanitary district and others. So that beats goal one, two, and four. The vehicle storage building, $814,000. We're going to be letting that bid here before too long, and that's a replacement building for not only parks, but streets, and for some public safety equipment down at the street shop on Eighth Street and Omaha Avenue. That will replace in whole all the buildings that are at Johnson Park, so those buildings will be demoed, and then that'll allow for the continuation and expansion of the trail and parking for the Johnson Park. That'll meet goal number three, the Mayor and Council. $310,000 for the Tazuka Trail Loop. That's to complete a loop within Tazuka. As you know, everyone loves to walk loops, similar to Skyview Park. This will complete trail loop inside Tazuka, which will be a great benefit and meet goal one, two, and four. $250,000 skate park rebuild and improvements is budgeted.
Shane, I have a question about that.
Yes, sir.
It came out in the paper, $125,000. Can you kind of reconcile those two numbers for us, please?
Sure. Absolutely. That'll meet goal one and two and four. $25,000 is a budgeted item, however, $125,000 is what the Mayor and Council is going to, has committed to that going forward, with the caveat that the skating community raises the match, the 50 percent match of $125,000 or more, so for a total of at least $250,000. So it's incumbent upon, and they're all about it, very excited about, the skating community's very excited about trying to raise those dollars and really make a great improvement to the skate park, and actually build a completely new concrete one is the goal, I think, and dream of, of the community, and especially the skate community.
Thank you, I just appreciate the clarification.
You're welcome. Again, that meets goal one, two, and four. Drainage of Victory Road and Sunrise, $420,000. That's to improve our drainage in our eastern border as the community continues to develop on our eastern border. It includes a retention, detention facility, and access to our flood control system and the various drainage apparatus that go along with that. Self-contained breathing, fires, going to purchase all-new self-contained breathing apparatus, which is the device that they wear into fires, so they can fight fire and not die. We're, Chief's recommending that we do a complete replacement there. The technology for those devices has increased greatly over the years, and the more we go along, the less we're NFPA compliant, so they're recommending, and you're funding through this budget, a complete replacement of those self-contained breathing apparatus. The fire tanker, that's through a rural contract development with, or excuse me, contract with our rural fire district, and they'll be purchasing that. Of course, we got to budget it in our, in your budget, and then the dollars are brought in from the rural fire protection district for a new fire tanker. $210,000 for Tazuka Phase III soccer complexes and fields. That's the beginning of Phase III. That was a long-term goal for Tazuka. That'll just get us started, that's not a complete goal, but that's what's budgeted in the next year to begin that process, to hopefully site and develop some soccer fields in Tazuka Park. Norfolk Avenue Bridge replacement of $2.3 million. That's this year's allotment for that in the next budget year, but that's the, that's the bridge right outside of Pringers and Hy-Vee East, and needs a complete replacement. Along with that replacement, we're going to do, extend the trail underneath the bridge, and we're going to plan on bringing the street skate from Norfolk Avenue all the way out to the east side of the new bridge. It'll be a five-lane bridge, which accommodates any future growth for City of Norfolk on its eastern border and is an ingress and egress there for our vehicle traffic long into the future. Bridges are, the bridge we're replacing is almost 85 years old, and we hope the new one lasts at least that long as well. So you're doing big-picture stuff, long-term planning for the community with that goal, and that meets goal number three. $950,000 worth of various street maintenance and repair projects, again, that's your street crews and contractors going out and fixing potholes and replacing streets and doing overlays, and all the things we do every year to make sure that our streets are in pretty good shape. They're never perfect, obviously, in Nebraska, they can never be perfect as a freestyle cycle, but we, you, the community, always does put some treasure towards making our Here's the enterprise fund expenditure highlights, includes the water, water pollution control, sewer maintenance, solid, and solid waste management. You'll see the personnel cost, operations, capital expenditures in each. These are intensive with capital expenditures, and you'll see their total budgets there for each. Water's $3.6 million, your water pollution control plant, your sewer plant is $3 million. Sewer maintenance is $4 million. Solid waste management is $2 million, and then you'll see your total of your expenditures there for your enterprise funds, which are self-supporting through fees and fees for There's your pie graph to show what those expenditures look like in total. Capital outlay, again, is a large portion of those. You start thinking about water and sewer maintenance, and think about watering, laying water pipe and sewer pipe, and maintaining facilities as robust as a water plant, east and west, and the sewer plant. It takes a lot of capital every year to keep us, keep us fluid. Personnel cost are 17-point million, or excuse me, 17.56 percent, or $2.2 million, and then operations and maintenance of those facilities is 3.7, or 29 percent, so with some debt service attached there as well for the long-term debt. Here's some capital projects that most folks don't see, but definitely appreciate every day, that have been, this is just an example of investments we've made as a community over many, many years, and here's some significant investments that the community is going to make going forward, which support really all of our goals. to make going forward, which support really all of our goals, economic development in particular and just community growth. In the sewer fund, $3.2 million for the northeast industrial sewer main extension, and then 3.2 to extend sewer south of the Elkhorn River, and that project's underway as well. And the one to northeast isn't underway, but it's under design currently. So those are two large expenditures for our continued growth as a community and, and an area. The water pollution control, $340,000 for a raw lift pump replacement. It's an amazing number for one pump, but it, 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 it does an incredibly tough job and it's in a tough environment, large pump. Water replacements, $576,000 to replace the 12-inch water main from First Street and Madison Avenue to Seventh and Madison Avenue. This water main will help replace some old tiring infrastructure and give us more credible, credible water source in the downtown area. Solid waste has $281,000 to, for two over-road trucks and one trailer, and that's to meet our goal that the Mayor Council set to begin, begin to vertically, more vertically integrate our solid waste collection, and we're actually going to be hauling the trash from the transportation, transfer station down to the landfill. So that's going to become a city project, and we're going to be able to save dollars as we project for, we're going to save considerable amount of dollars by doing it that way. So next budget year, we'll be able to tell you what our savings is going to be, we do have projections on that if, if you'd like to hear about them tonight. And the final slide here is funds for over $2 million, with over $2 million increase. You'll see in the column to the right of the increase, if I can get my, not filling up on your screen. Anyway, you can look to the dollar increase of $12 million, and you'll see the asterisks beside all three of those, actually. The single asterisk includes one, $11.2 million of refunding bonds to refund recreational facility bonds. So we got to budget that accordingly, and it shows that increase, seems like a large increase, but that is only because of the refunding of the bonds and rebudgeting. The next two columns, general fund and capital construction fund, includes, both of those includes $2.6 million of revenue from the half-cent sales tax for the library renovation and expansion project, budgeted both in the general fund and then again in the transfer to the capital projects fund. And that's why it looks like a major, large increase, because we have to budget it that way. So that is my presentation for tonight, be happy, between Randy and I, we're happy to answer any questions. If you've got fine, detailed questions in there, Randy's got the, the detailed budget in front of him there, I believe, and we can go from there. So that is your budget presentation for 2015, 2016, Mayor Council.
Don't get too comfortable in there yet, Shane, because we do have vehicle parking that I opened the public hearing on, too, but if you want to, ah, we're going to look at Randy to do that, okay? Any questions for Shane in the presentation, Council? Okay, I think certainly we all went through the details of this over the months, prior months, so I do want to say thank you to both Randy and Sheila for the efforts then that has been put into this, to bring it forward to this council and certainly a very clear picture. So a lot of work, a lot of effort, thank you for all that as well, Shane. Job well done, makes it much easier to see a presentation like that.
Well, you have great staff, Mayor Council, do a good job putting that together, you know, it's a team effort, and one thing that I, I have to say as your city administrator is the Department of Division Heads and, and really all the, all the employees within those divisions really understand, for the most part, the budget. I mean, it's, they understand how the dollars work, and you know, if we, if we have to squeeze here, they understand that it's to fix something else in the budget or to promote something else in the budget. So it's been a, it's been a formula that's worked at the 25 years that I've been here and that I've witnessed as your city administrator, obviously, but as a division head and as an employee, and I, and I think it's just a successful recipe, so it's really up to them, it's really their, their work to put that budget together, and at the end of the day, it's the community giving us the resources that, that are so precious, so.
Well, and well said, but thank you, Division Heads, for being here to, to back up whatever it was that maybe your city administrator wasn't able to clarify, so appreciate having you here, everyone here. So if nothing further on that presentation, Randy, can we look to you on the vehicle parking?
Yes, Your Honor. Actually, anytime you change a levy request from the amount it was the prior year, state statutes require you to hold a special hearing, and we usually do this in conjunction with our regular budget hearing, and then approve that increase of, it could even be a decrease, any amount that your property tax request changes from the prior year. Our debt service fund and our economic development fund stayed exactly the same, so they're not part of the hearing. Our general fund and our vehicle parking fund both increased to take into account the changes in assessed valuation. The vehicle parking district boys' levies at .35 cents, that's allowed by law, and their valuation went up slightly, not very much, it only went up $96,174. Applying that .35 cent levy that they can, which is maximum they can have, results in a $337 increase in their property tax levy. That changes our property tax from eight, request from 83, $83,414 last year to $83,751 this year. The city's overall assessed valuation went up 4.81%, I believe there was a slide chain showed that, showed that 4.81% increase. That's a $60,536,000, $233 increase. We left the city's levy rate the same as last year, we didn't change it at all, left it at 24.6673 cents for $100 assessed valuation. Applying that to that 60 million increase gives a $149,326 increase in the property tax levy backing off the delinquency allowance in the County Treasurers Commission gives a $140,000, $173 increase in property tax budget that is all in the general fund. And that's what this hearing's about, is simply have to have a budget hearing anytime you change up or down your property tax request from the prior year.
Okay, any questions, Council, Adolf, or Randy on that? Okay, I will remind us, we're, these are public hearings, so if there's anyone in the audience that may have questions or wants to address either, now is the hour. If not, I'm going to close then the public hearing, and we'll first look for consideration of Resolution 2015-27, which would be approving the additional 1% increase in the restricted fund authority allowed by the affirmative vote of at least 75% of this council.
Your Honor, I'd offer for consideration Resolution 2015-27.
Second that, Your Honor.
All right, we have a motion with a second for consideration of Resolution 2015-27. If no further discussion, I would ask that you vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, council member Faust absent, Resolution 2015-27 is adopted.
All right, next we're looking for consideration of ordinance number 5360, which is approving the fiscal year 2015-16 appropriations and approving the fiscal year 2015-16 proprietary budget.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number 5360. Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second. We have a short title on this, Beth?
Yes.
Okay.
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, adopting the budget statement to be termed the Annual Appropriation Bill, appropriating sums for necessary expenses and liabilities, adopting the proprietary budget statement, providing for severability, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, ordinance 5360 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, this is one that needs to be passed on all three readings tonight because we don't have, we got to get it off to the state and the county by September 20th. We won't have time to do that after the next council meeting.
So I think he's looking to one of you gentlemen.
Being said, Your Honor, I would pause that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5360 on second and third reading. Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5360 on second and third. No further discussion? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, council member Faust absent, ordinance 5360 carries on second and third.
All right, and next would be consideration of Resolution 2015-28, that's approving the property tax requests for fiscal year 2015-16 for the vehicle parking fund and general fund in amounts different than fiscal year 2014-15.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of Resolution 2015-28, I believe.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second for consideration of Resolution 2015-28. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, council member Faust absent, Resolution 2015-28 is adopted.
Okay, Shane, would your efforts in the great slides that you put together be available to citizens that may have further question, if they so choose? Is it out there on the website?
Not yet, but it sure, sure can be, we'll put it out there. Well, I'm not sure if we've got a website yet, it's in the, it's in the whole packet that we put together, I don't know if it's on the website, then it is.
Okay, very good, well, I thought there were some great, short ways of looking at that that might help and, and make for questions within the public, so.
Absolutely.
If you do have any questions, please give the city a call and ask them, don't make assumptions, I encourage you to make a phone call and let, let us answer that for you, so.
One, one thing, though, I think needs to be mentioned, though, in that slide is part of that increase in budget that shows a 15% increase was the vote to improve the library.
Yeah.
That 2.67 million that was listed, I don't have the numbers right in front of me, so it looks like the, the staff prepared a budget that was 50% higher than last year, when actually part of that budget was improved, was voted in by the public for the library.
Absolutely.
I mean, I need to think that needs to be made mention, because that's way ahead of inflation, that's way ahead of what we see for, if you didn't revenue stream coming in, it would look very, we'd look backwards, actually.
Sure.
Compared to other years, so I think that somehow we've got to get that, either in their line item or something in there that states that. I mean, you, you had it on there written, but it just, what's going to be said is our budget's 15% more than last year. That's it, and I think that's people, you know, when honestly you break it out, it's what, 6%? You take out that 2.6?
Yeah, and that amount is actually in there twice.
Yeah.
Because we're budgeting, and that additional half cent by state law has got to be budgeted and, and received into the general fund, and we're transferring that out to the capital projects fund, we're going to spend it. So that number, that additional half cent sales tax is raising that 2.6 million or whatever, is in there, increasing our budget twice.
But it, but it, what I'm, I guess what I'm getting at is your actual budget increase without that line item in there is about a 7, 8%, no, it'd be less than that, it'd be 6% increase over from last year.
And.
Which had more than enough in sales tax and the property tax evaluations went up, which would have covered that 6% increase, which then gave you your 140 or whatever it was, $120,000, you know, additional monies back to our beginning balance or your reserves, like you like.
Further reserve.
So I think it's, you know.
And then when you, as Randy explained, that last slide really tells, tells it all about the, the double budgeting of those numbers that.
It does, but it shows 50%, I'm just trying to get.
Right, understood, appreciate that, Councilman, absolutely.
No, it's a good comment, and that's exactly why I encourage anyone that may have question either to call Councilman Clausen or certainly your city.
Oh, wow.
He does a great job, he really does, I appreciate having him on the council, so. Nothing further, let's move on then to, where are we? I'm lost. 25, consideration of ordinance number 5361, approving fiscal year 2015-16 classification and pay plan.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance 5361 on first hearing.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second. Do we need some discussion on this?
We have a, we've budgeted 2% cost of living comparability raised there for the employees, and it also includes a half percent increase in pension amount as dictated by the statute for police pension, and also it brings along the general employees as well in that and raises their pension by a half percent as well. So that meets the statute for the police and keeps our employee groups comparable, which has been a standard that the Mayor Council set many, many years ago and continues to, continues to support.
Okay, any questions at all, Council?
Probably not so much a question, but you know, when the public looks at this, and I think it needs to be explained every year, you're going to see in there, because they have the different grade sections, and we've got positions that are noted as vacant, but they're showing dollar amounts, you want to explain what's going on there?
That's just our pay scale, what we do is we, we have a range there from grade, all the different grades, it shows all the different grades, you can see those actually in the budget document, and it just allows for different assignments to be made if we either change job descriptions, hire someone new, it just leaves, those are just the grades that are available to the Mayor Council to hire new personnel. The personnel that you see in the budget are the personnel that we got and their corresponding payer, pay grades, so that's what that's for.
Clear?
Yeah, no, I, what I was getting at was, otherwise a question that has come back to me in differing years, are, are those positions that we're looking at filling?
No.
They aren't positions that we're looking at filling, they're actual, the scale that is there for the different positions, so.
That's correct, it's for any future developments that you'd have for any, any of your current personnel or new personnel that you may hire in the future, it just, it's just the grades that are available currently.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the City of Norfolk, Nebraska, classifying the employees of the city, fixing the ranges of compensation of such employees, providing a pay range, repealing ordinance number 5317, providing for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form, and when the ordinance shall take effect.
All right, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, council member Faust absent, ordinance 5361 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5361 on second and third hearing, as I believe that's probably another one of those that needs to advance forward. Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5361 on second and third. I would ask again that you please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative, council member Faust absent, ordinance 5361 carries on second and third reading.
All right, how about the August sales tax report, which is actually the June sales? Is that your?
Yes, that's correct, Your Honor. Our sales tax receipts are up 600, well, we got $697,205.69 of sales tax receipts, which is up $10,359, or 1.51% from last year, and in this case, I'm just talking about the one-half percent sales tax that we've had for a number of years. Then we also have the additional half cent for the library addition and renovation, which is $232,401.90. Year-to-date, our one-and-a-half cent sales tax is up $464,522.72, or 6.57%, and I think that's primarily courtesy of our hailstorm a year ago, and year-to-date, sales tax for the library addition is $644,562.19.
Any questions for Randy at all on that? All right, we're going to move on then to telecommunications occupation, occupation tax report for the first three quarters of fiscal year 2014-15.
This is just a report I'd like to get out there to let the elected officials see the telecommunications. the telecommunications occupation tax receipts. As you can see, revenues continue to slide downward. Not much we can do about it. This is a report I like to get out there every six months or so.
Okay, I appreciate that. I think it's great that it is called to our attention, and again, you know, some things are out of our control, so probably many things, but. Next, we're going to look for consideration of approval of the Emerald Ash Bore Community Plan. There's been a lot of work put into this, and Diane, where are you?
Dr. Sherber.
Okay, Dr. Sherber, are you going to come forward and speak to us on this?
Yes.
Thank you. Again, I don't know that I recognized until I became a little bit more involved in what's going on with our area tree board, of which Dr. Sherber is certainly a huge asset for us. So glad you're here. Pat's going to share with him, take responsibility to help us out here.
I'm Tom Sherber, chairman of the tree board in town here. The Emerald Ash Bore is a little bitty beetle. It's just completely on a nickel, and unfortunately, it's been in the United States since 2002 and has destroyed 55 million ash trees since then. It's going to spread across the entire nation, mostly being carried by firewood. It currently has been spreading across Iowa the last several years, and this last year was found 45 miles east of Omaha.
45 miles east of Omaha.
Which is a jump of about 50 miles. So it is coming, it will be here. In Norfolk, there was a tree survey done in 2010.
Great.
Which surveyed the terrace trees and the park trees. It found there are approximately 600 ash trees in Norfolk. We had it surveyed done by Pat and John Cuba and other people in Norfolk, and Diane involved in it also in June of this year, and found approximately 400 publicly-owned ash trees in Norfolk.
400 owned ash trees?
Owned.
Okay, so those that are in my backyard?
Yes.
Okay.
No, 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 those are owned by the city. The city owns about 400 ash trees.
I'm sorry, okay.
How many are in your backyard? I had no idea.
Okay, okay.
So as opposed to Omaha and Lincoln, where the terrace trees are responsibility of the city, and Omaha has about 114,000 ash trees they own, and Lincoln has about 111 ash trees they own, they have a huge visual problem coming up because removal of those trees is not good. An ash tree, once it dies, rapidly becomes very brittle and falls apart and breaks down and drops branches and houses people, lots, cars, et cetera.
So this little beetle, though, that you're talking about, it's going to take him a while to get, take care, and once they hit that tree.
Okay, once the beetle hits a tree, they have to develop into thousands of beetles, and they literally strangle the tree with the larva. The larva comes under the bark and literally strangles the tree and scars up the entire circulatory system of the tree. It takes about three to four years for a tree to die.
Okay, very good. That was my question. I wondered if it would happen in my lifetime, but you're telling me probably.
Probably it will.
Okay, okay.
In fact, the estimate is that we should have the beetle.
Yeah.
We should have the beetle here approximately in the next two to four years.
Okay.
And then it's going to be, after that, it's going to destroy ash trees, and then we have about 400 city-owned ash trees in the city. That's an approximation number.
Gotcha.
So we have not a major issue. So with Pat's help, we drew up a plan of, for the surveys we did in June, and for the removal of the ash trees at a reasonable rate, which the park department can afford.
Right, yeah. Funny how that works, isn't it?
It works well.
Yeah.
And so instead of trying to get out there and do them all at once, the park department is going to go out and take a few out every year and gradually get ready, so when they do it here, we'll have a lot fewer ash trees.
So we really need to encourage our citizens to get involved in Two for Trees.
It's Two for Trees. Now, the terrace trees belong to the people who lived it by them, the terrace trees.
Okay.
And so that's going to have to be encouraged, that too. We already have had a lot of articles from the rest of the state forests, Omaha Herald, Rock Day the News.
Right.
Bringing this over the spring. So what's happening is that those have been pretty little criticized so far, we have to keep that up. So if you understand, one, their responsibilities in terms of the trees, and two, the cities will have to have a little money spent to spend these things, but in our case, not a lot.
Right. I appreciate that, Dr. And you're absolute, and I know between you and Diane, you'll keep that information floating. You do a great job.
Right. So it is recommended that we not do any tree treatment until the bug is in 15 miles of town, whereas you can treat the trees.
You can treat them.
Can treat them.
Oh, we're.
If not 100% effective.
Okay.
And it costs between $100 and $200 per tree, per year.
Per year?
Per year.
So am I going to do this every year?
Yes.
I see, okay.
Now, they're saying now it can maybe every two years may be enough, but it's an ongoing affair for the rest of your life, in your tree's life.
Yeah, okay.
And if you want to do it or not, you have to hire, it's strongly recommended that you hire an expert.
Right.
An arborist.
Yeah.
To do that for you. It could do it, but it's, it's having to inject the chemicals into the tree.
Right.
You can scatter the chemicals on the ground beneath the tree, but those things are toxic to people, pets, children, dogs, et cetera. And you can easily exceed the safe limits for the area in a real quick hurry.
Yeah.
And those are the same chemicals that are used to defeat the grubs in the lawns.
Yeah.
And so if you're going to do grubs and the ash tree, you're rapidly above the safe limits of those chemicals.
Okay, so for those of you that have questions on this Emerald Ash Bore, Dr. Sherber and Diane both, the tree board, they're invited to come to the meetings, too. So am I correct? Okay, so we'll make sure those things are posted as well. And Pat's going to talk about the plan a little bit?
I'm just going to talk just briefly. As you can see, Dr. Sherber has been, done some extensive research on this, and he's kind of right on. It's not a matter of if this is going to happen, it's a matter of when. It's affecting millions of trees already, and most of ours are going to be affected. So what, Dr. Sherber's put together a plan, which the park division fully embraces, you know, first of all, don't plant ash trees.
Yeah, right.
Second of all, we're going to be proactive. We've got over, a few, little over 400 trees on our public land that we consider park trees, and we're going to, as he stated, remove so many a year. We'll kind of do that during the winter months, we'll, we'll mark them before they lose their leaves, and we will take the ones that already are showing some dieback, just from old age, storm damage.
Okay.
And we'll start removing those. And then when it gets to a point, to where it gets here and within that 15-mile range or whatever, to where we treat them, we will look at the treatment option for our high-profile ones on our whole high-profile areas, like in front of buildings and stuff like that. Others, hopefully by the time it reaches us to where we're taking out so many a year, we will have gotten the bulk of these or the bulk of the bad ones or the bad-looking ones out of the way, so the city's not going to be hit all at once with a removal of 400 trees all at once. And then as we remove these trees, we'll, our policy is going to try to be to where for every tree, park tree we remove, we'll try to plant two, two in its space, not necessarily right there, but in the park system.
Sure.
And next year will be a good start on that, because I understand we're shooting for 150 trees for 150 years, so.
Yes, yes.
We'll get a head start on that.
I like that.
That we're going to count against these.
Very good.
So, but that's, that's kind of it. And the big, and then the other thing is just education. And the tree advisory board is going to be forefront in that with educating the public, keeping us current on stuff, on removal policies, and we will adapt the plan to fit as, as needed to how our forest is attacked in the city. But we recommend that the city council adopt our EAB program.
So that being said, Pat, is it going to be something that you and/or a staff member can actually treat those trees, or are we going to need to bring someone in?
I think right now it's pretty much professionally done.
Okay.
I think if you have a certified arborist that would go to training or somebody that would go to the training, I think you could do that. I suspect it's specialized chemicals, specialized knowledge on to do it, not to say that we couldn't train somebody to do it, but right now it's pretty much being done by professional companies.
Okay, all right.
And it's expensive enough to where you don't want to treat all your ash trees. You would do it for your high-profile trees because of the expensive nature of this and the continued applications it's going to. The big thing is replace them with diverse trees that are strong and disease-resistant, never going to last.
Yeah, who would have ever thought, though?
Future.
Yeah, you know.
We have the dune disease.
Yeah.
The dune trees out. We have the pine welt disease here in our pine trees. On its way is the thousand kicker disease of the, of the walnuts.
There's a lot of stuff happening out there.
Yeah.
This is the biggest one, and the one probably is going to be the most damaging in the history of tree insects in the history of the United States.
Yeah, the dune is bad, this is going to be equally bad.
Counselman?
Is the cost of the tree treatment mostly the cost for the professional to do it, or is it?
I haven't seen the breakdown to know if it's within the labor or the chemical cost.
Okay.
I don't know what that breakdown is.
No, I mean, that would be somewhat interesting for an evaluation.
I think when we get close, we're going to be looking at that and deciding how many of those trees we want to save and weigh that in to do our treatment plan.
That's a randomly changing aspect, because the costs are changing year by year. They improve things and do things, and there are still a lot of studies being done, even bringing in some wasps to kill the beetles.
Really?
Treatment may change within the next couple of years.
Yeah.
It's a big priority right now. So costs may come down, cost, the treatment may change. Hard to say exactly right now what we're going to do.
So in each case, as you take out these ash trees, you'll plan to plant two in its place, is that right?
Well, we want to plant two for every we take out. We'll replace one where it's at if it's in an appropriate area. I'm not saying we're going to put two in the exact same spot.
Sure, sure.
But yeah, our, our policy is going to try to be, to hit that mark of we take, if we remove one tree, we're going to put two back. You know, one in its place to maintain the canopy where, where it's lost, if there's room for it, you know, if it's in a big group of trees, naturally we'll use best judgment, but yeah.
We're currently in the process of applying for grants for tree purchasing, and hopefully a grant for 10 trees this December, a grant for a lot of the area down around the east of the railway trail, and also the memorial park area this fall. I'm just going to be applying for this fall.
Is that through the NRD thing?
The NRD is the second one. The first one is the L E R D. The first one is the L E R D, yeah, L E R D proposal, yeah. The others for the Nebraska Forest Service. Forest Service, yeah.
Great.
All right, thank you very much, you too. Appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may, I don't think you can say this enough, the educational piece of this for the public is very, very vital for our success for this program and for their success for the property owners to really begin now and evaluate their properties and identify those ash trees so they can make a decision on, on treatment or removal of process. That's going to be vital. We've been trying to hit it as much as we can, but we can't say it enough, so if the media can help with that, we'd much appreciate it.
Well, and if any of you out there that have those great trees in your yard, but you have no idea what it is, speaking from experience, all you got to do is cut a little branch off and, you know, even a couple leaves, and you take it into a local business that knows a heck of a lot more about trees, and they're more than happy to tell you what kind it is, because I did not know, so. Anyway, that being said, great job. Thanks, Dr. Sherber, for all your efforts on that, Diane as well. Pat, thanks for being here. So we have consideration of approval of the plan. Much discussion? Are you ready to vote?
I don't have a motion yet.
We don't have a motion yet? I'm sorry, we don't have a motion, Beth tells me, so can I look for consideration of the approval?
I'll make the motion, Your Honor.
Okay.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded. We've had plenty of discussion, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
And next, we're looking for consideration of ordinance 5362, authorizing issuance of a special assessment bond anticipation note in the principal amount not to exceed $200,000 for the paving District 508.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number 5362.
Second.
We have a motion with a second. Randy, do you want to address this for us quick?
Yes, Your Honor, this is simply the short-term financing for paving District 508, which is Welder's East Knolls 11th Edition. I understand they hope to get that paving in, yet this construction season. This would give us $181,264 to go towards those costs, and the bond issue is expected to be around $187,000, but this authorizes up to $200,000 because we're doing like we have for the last several issues, putting this out to bid with the local banks, and one of the.
Right.
Bid options is they could ask for an upfront premium. That hasn't happened yet. I doubt it will happen with this, but that is an option. So we're going to be soliciting bids. We'll probably send those bid solicitations out towards the end of next week, and get bids back from the banks and award it to whichever bank is the low bid on this.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Short title, Beth?
An ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of a bond anticipation note of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, in the principal amount of not to exceed $200,000 for the purpose of providing interim financing for the costs of street improvements for paving District 508 pending the issuance of permanent general obligation various purpose bonds of the city, prescribing the form of said note, agreeing to issue the city's general obligation various purpose bonds to pay the note at maturity or to pay the note from other available funds, entering into a contract on behalf of the city with the holder of said note, authorizing the officers of the city to make arrangements for the sale or placement of the note and to designate the final terms, rates, and maturity schedule for said note within stated parameters, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right, and with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Councilman Faust absent. Ordinance 5362 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, as Randy explained, he's looking at getting these out for bids in the near future. I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5362 on second and third.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5362 on second and third. Any discussion at all? If not, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Councilmember Faust absent. Ordinance 5362 carries on second and third.
Next is consideration of ordinance 5363. It's approving amendment number three to the police pension plan to increase the required employee/employer contribution from 6.5% of salary to the 7% effective October 1, 2015. I'm looking for consideration of?
Your Honor, I would offer ordinance 5363 for consideration.
Second.
All right, we have a motion with a second for consideration of 5363. Any questions on this at all? I think it was explained pretty well as we were working through, so short title on this, Beth?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend the police pension plan to incorporate LB 1082 approved in 2012, increasing employee and employer contributions from 6.5% to 7% of compensation by adoption of the attached amendment number three, provide when the ordinance shall be in full force and effect and provide for publication of the ordinance in pamphlet form.
And with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Councilmember Faust absent. Ordinance 5363 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, I move we suspend the rules and pass ordinance number 5363 on second and third readings.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to suspend the rules on ordinance 5363 and approve on second and third. Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Councilmember Faust absent. Ordinance 5363 carries on second and third.
And next is consideration of ordinance number 5364, approving amendment number three to the employee retirement plan to increase the maximum city match of employee contributions from the 6.5 of compensation to 7%.
Your Honor, I'd move consideration of ordinance number 5364.
Second.
A motion with a second for consideration of 5364. Again, I think we've had discussion on this, so Beth, I would look for a short title. So Beth, I would look for a short title.
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, to amend the employee's retirement plan to increase the maximum city match from 6.5% to 7% of compensation by adoption of the attached amendment number three, provide when the ordinance shall be in full force